And so we can now move on to our 10:30 on our timed items, which is Public Hearing, 6.7, Public Hearing, Consideration of Comprehensive Retailer Licensing Tobacco Ordinance, TRL, and Code of Ordinance, and Efforts to Address the Continual Decline of Lake County's Health Rankings and the High Rates of Youth Tobacco Use. And Health Services Director Anthony Arden, and Project Director Tobacco Education and Prevention Director, Project Director Liberty Francis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No. So I won't be able to, it's in our, in my drive for the county.
Yeah. You need a couple of minutes?
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
Maybe we could take another short break? Or did you, did you have something you can talk about?
I'm going to play emails to me.
Okay, so we need a couple of minutes then. All right, we'll take another five minutes, and then we'll come back at 10:30. Five, well, we'll say 10:40, we'll just say 10:40. I'm going to say 10. Looks like we have everything we need, so we'll come back to order here, and I will go ahead and give the floor to Director Arden, so he can give the floor to
Liberty Francis.
Liberty Francis. All right.
Good morning, and thank you for having us back again today. We, I am Liberty Francis from the Lake County Public Health Department Tobacco Education and Prevention, and I am the Project Director. We are here today to present the tobacco retail license that your board requested for us to develop a draft for. So I just have a little presentation before we move forward, so. So first of all, Lake County continues to have one of the highest smoking rates in the state of California. At times, it has been more than double the state rate. Ninety percent of our smokers report that they started using tobacco products before even age 18. Our current law in the state of California is 21 years of age or older. Despite the efforts to limit youth access to tobacco, youth are still able to access these tobacco products. And here we have two different surveys. Some are Lake County students reported as part of the Healthy Kids Survey. Sixty-five percent of 11th graders said that it's easy to access tobacco products on their own. Sixty percent of 9th graders said it's easy to access, and forty percent of 7th graders said it was easy to access tobacco products living here in Lake County. So that shows how it compares to our state rates, which are much lower. In 2018, tobacco youth purchase results from the state decoy operations, the tobacco retailers that were observed during that time, 100% of them failed and sold to youth during that This shows that all of our tobacco control programs that are funded by Prop 56 and 99 throughout the state are tasked with doing what's considered a youth purchase survey. So it may not be a decoy operation for law enforcement purposes, but it is for data. And this reflects us in the North Coast region, and 27% of tobacco retailers were selling to minors. And as you look at this state of California map, our North Coast and Tri-County South are between 22.6 and 25% of violation rate, and the only area which is higher is Los Angeles County. Okay, so tobacco use harms over electronic smoking devices. These devices have become highly addictive. They interfere with normal brain development of youth, create weaker immune systems, inflammation and irritation of the airways, destruction of the avioli in the lungs, it actually explodes inside their lungs, which they would have to have surgically removed, it does not repair itself. Increased risk of blood clotting, stiffening of the blood vessels, increased acid reflux, and it exacerbates mental health issues, especially anxiety and depression. So we surveyed, and two different surveys throughout Lake County recently, of residents that live in our county about tobacco-related issues. Ninety-three percent of those folks believed that flavored tobacco products are harmful to youth. Ninety-five percent believe that it's important for communities to address and prevent youth from using tobacco products. Eighty-four percent said they would be in support of local policy or law that prohibits the sale and distribution of all flavored products and designate a portion of this annual license for enforcement. Eighty-four percent believe that their community has been negatively impacted by smoking, vaping, and other tobacco uses. Studies found when policies are adopted to include enforcement and penalties, the youth sales are reduced. One of our neighboring counties, Sonoma County, prior to their TRLs, tobacco retail license being established, they had a very high failure rate for their youth purchases as well, I believe it was around 18%. And once those municipalities started addressing tobacco retail licenses and putting those into place, their youth rates for sale dropped to 1.8%. This graphic here was developed by Stanford Medicine, and it shows the nicotine levels in the different tobacco products. So as you see, one pack of cigarettes contains 22mg of nicotine. And as you grow up the line to the different products that have been developed over the last few years, the nicotine amount in those products are increasing to very unsafe levels of nicotine, especially when used by a young adult or child. So one of the popular ones that we are seeing in the schools is the Flume, which is 400mg of nicotine, and then the Elf Bar, 650mg of nicotine, and they actually have a Geek Bar now on, on sale that has been found here in our county that is even more than that. So what we're being told by tobacco users is that these products, if they're a heavy vapor, they're going through these products in three days, four days. So if you consider that Elf Bar being the equivalent of 590 cigarettes, they're going through that in two to three days. So we have lots of California tobacco laws currently. As I said before, that they are 21 years and older, they have, they are tasked with IDing anyone who looks under the age of 27 years old. And that there also have decoys. If they ask their real age, they have to do so, there's inspections that happen. But as I stated before, Lake County has not been inspected by any state regulatory agency since 2018. Other Tobacco State Act laws, you know, they're currently not allowed to sell flavored tobacco products, but that SB 793 that was on a ballot measure and approved in the state of California did not have a way to enforce that law, and they gave the authority to local jurisdictions to enforce that. Through our observations here in Lake County, we know that there are tobacco retailers that still are selling flavored products, and we also know that there are retailers that are not state licensed to sell tobacco products, but they are selling tobacco products. So this is one of the signs that is mandated at every register, it is the State Act sign, it has to be updated periodically, so if a retailer has an old sticker at their register, then they are automatically out of compliance. This has to be at every register. So what would our implementation process look like? In June, our department, Health Department, applied for a Department of Justice grant for implementation, retailer education, and enforcement. They should be giving out award letters in October, presentations to community members, stakeholders regarding the benefits of a tobacco retail license and what this specific ordinance would look like. So we've been in the community doing presentations to our county
Partners.
Partners, thank you. And then if this policy, sorry, ordinance is passed, then our department will be bringing a resolution to the Board of Supervisors to establish the tobacco retail license fee. And then we will post a position for environmental health technician who will assist us with issuing the licenses and help with compliance. Let me go back just a minute for the Department of Justice grant. We did receive letters of support from our local law enforcement chiefs for Clear Lake, Lakeport, and the Sheriff's Department, so those were all included, that they intend to partner with that Department of Justice grant. Then going back to our October-November deadline, our implementation plan, we're looking to train the staff, law enforcement, and community partners about the ordinance. And then November/December, we're going to educate retailers, explaining the retail license, application process, procedures, fees outlined in the ordinance. And then in the ordinance, we looked at January 1 of 2025 being when the ordinance would be in effect. We would complete initial site visits to help those retailers get into compliance before their licenses are issued, and then, of course, issuing licenses. As far as the implementation and education, that will be an ongoing effort that will continue, because we know it may take a little bit of time to get our retailers up to speed where they need to be. Recently, when, speaking with some of our retailers that sell tobacco products, they have expressed that sometimes the tobacco companies will come in and tell them, well, that we have this new product. And so we will build that relationship with those tobacco retailers where they understand what is and is not approved to sell under this and the state regulations. So enforcement, this enforcement plan was developed with all three of our local jurisdictions, and they felt that it was important to have strong violation, sorry, a strong enforcement plan. And upon finding the department's first violation at a location, the license will be suspended for 30 days, and the retailer will have a hundred, or sorry, $1,000 fine. Upon finding this second violation at this location within a 60-month period, they will have a 90-day suspension of their tobacco retail license, and they'll pay a $2,500 fine. A third violation in a 60-month period will be 120-day suspension and a $5,000 fine. Upon finding four or more violations within a single location within 60 months, their license will be revoked, and no new license shall be, sorry, issued to that licensee until five years have passed from the date of revocation. After the first violation at a location where someone is selling tobacco products without even a state license or a local license, they will be issued a $5,000 fine, and they will not have the opportunity to have a license in our community. So as I mentioned previously, we met extensively with the city of Clear Lake, the city of Lakeport, as well as, at the time, Chair Sabatier. And we looked at this as a county project, and knowing that each jurisdiction has the opportunity to pass an ordinance like this, they were in favor of passing this policy in all three jurisdictions. We have yet to make the presentation to the entire board in Lakeport, but we have made a presentation in the city of Clear Lake, and we had consensus to move forward with this exact policy. In the event that this board passes for the unincorporated areas of Lake County, city of Clear Lake passed their ordinance, and city of Lakeport passed their ordinance, those two jurisdictions would give over the right to Lake County Health Services to implement this policy as far as issuing the licenses and handle enforcement. So we are in belief that when this policy addresses the entire county, it will improve our rates of youth smoking and tobacco purchasing that's happening. And we also believe that partnership between all three jurisdictions and all three law enforcement agencies, that we will have a united front, that we're going to make a stand and not allow youth purchasing of tobacco products in our community.
All right. Is there any questions, or Supervisor Green?
Thank you. First off, all these following comments are meant in a supportive way, generally supportive of the measure, but the devil is in the details, and there are some details in this ordinance. One, thank you for clarifying that the eventual goal is to have a county-wide ordinance, but as it's phrased right now, it's not super clear whether this ordinance is intended to apply in the unincorporated areas of the county or countywide. I see references on Section 2 SubA that does not include the word "unincorporated." That would seem to imply that a county-wide ordinance is intended. Also, on Section 14A1, the last sentence says notification of this violation will be sent to the jurisdiction in which the retailer was selling without a license. So it sounds like from your description, there's general buy-in from the cities that they would allow county enforcement, but it is not clearly worded here that that is the ultimate goal, and no is there any provision in here that would allow, direct anyway, the Health Services Department to partner with cities in implementation of their ordinances should they, should they pass one. So that's kind of the most substantive issue I'm going to raise right here. I did speak with County Council and Director Arden about some, I'll call them housekeeping items. Just for sake of clarity, this is a big ordinance, it's kind of a landmark thing, but ordinances kind of get passed, and then they get filed away. Where it actually lives is in the Lake County Code online, and so if you have a top-to-bottom ordinance that reads cleanly on that code. So I think there is some ability here to add a purpose section and an authority section to the top of the ordinance where the definitions are. And we follow that same format with our microenterprise home kitchen ordinance. I just think it's a cleaner way to do that, because people are going to be looking at this online, and they're going to say, what is this all about, and who does this apply to? So clarification about the cooperation with the cities is needed. I believe I spoke with County Council, there are a couple chapter references in here that probably still need to be changed to articles. Those would appear in Section 16 and 17. So just to be clear, that the references are going to be the article. And last thing is, where is this going to live? As currently proposed, it'd be under Chapter 9 of the Code, under Health and Sanitation. We also have a Chapter 11 pertaining to business licenses that I might propose as a slightly better fit. But long story short, again, supportive, I think there's a substantive problem with this as presented today in terms of the interplay with the cities. I do think there are some chapter references that need to get revised, and I do think there is the ability to do some housekeeping at the top of the ordinance and figure out where this is going to live in the code, so that when we do pass this puppy, it's super crystal clear what the intent of this is and stuff like that. At the end of the day, I think those various issues are going to make it difficult to get through a first reading today, so I think what I'd be seeking is board consensus to give direction to staff to clean up those housekeeping items as needed and bring it back to a later date for a first reading.
If I may, the reason that the decision went into the Health and Safety Code is because it's going to be very similar to a food permit, a COOPA permit for hazmat waste, and it's going to be run through the Environmental Health Department. And so it's my understanding also that the county unincorporated does not currently issue business licenses, and this is very different than a business license.
So I think that addresses your concern with that one, and I want to address the
Microphone.
I want to address the concern about the city enforcement aspect of it.
Oh, doesn't it, is it not on?
There you go. It's on now.
Even closer. Sorry, usually my voice carries. So the cities, when they get to the point of where they're passing their resolutions or ordinances, they would have to write into their own ordinances to defer to the county for the jurisdiction. So we've already kind of addressed that in our meeting with the city administrators there. So I don't think that's something that would live in our ordinance, because it's something that would have to live with the city ordinances, to defer to us for the jurisdiction for enforcement of penalties and fines. I hope that makes sense.
All right. Did you have any thoughts on the purpose and authority sections at the top? Any opposition to that?
I don't have a strong feeling one way or another on that one. To me, that's just additional text to, I guess, address your concern, but I don't think that fundamentally alters the ordinance. I don't know. Lloyd, did you have some text or language prepared to add in?
Yes, some suggested language, of course. You know, it's for your board's consideration as to the purpose section, purpose and intent section, and then the authority sections. You have ordinances code sections in our Lake County Code that Supervisor Green has pointed out, in that MKHC?
Yeah.
M-H-K-O. That code section does have a purpose and intent and authority section devoted to that chapter or article, and you also have code sections in the Lake County Code that do not have that. So staff does have some suggested language here for your board's consideration, and if your board approves that language, it would be, and moves forward with the, with the first reading of the ordinance, it would be the approval of the first reading as amended, incorporating those, those additional sections or subsections, as well as Supervisor Green referenced, some of the other housekeeping minor revisions that I, that staff can walk the board through as part of the review for this ordinance.
And so just so we're clear, the purpose and scope section's not absolutely needed?
Correct. Your board may consider that, absolutely up to your board. And if your board wishes to have the purpose and intent section, as well as the authority section, I, staff has some suggested language for that.
Thank you, Lloyd. Supervisor Sabatier, give your pen up.
I just think it's already there, that has the findings, which are the reasons we have to take action, and it has the now therefore, which is our purpose. I just think it's there with different words, and I don't want to change anything, I want to be able to move forward today.
Any other comments? We'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone in the public in the chambers that wants to come up and talk about this item on the agenda, 6.7, please come on up.
Don't be shy.
All right.
Good morning. I'm Becky Siletto, I'm the Superintendent for Canockdye Unified School District. Thank you for letting me speak this morning. This morning, I'm here not only for myself and my district, but all of the districts in Lake County. We were all here at the last meeting. Unfortunately, we're all starting school this week, and I am fortunate to have a little bit larger staff than the rest of the districts, so I was able to kind of sneak away. We are all very united, as well as having our county superintendent with us. We live, I hate to say it, and breathe this problem every day at our schools and our districts. It is truly a crisis with our students. Every time I hear the data that Liberty presents so well, I kind of shudder a little bit inside, because I hate to be the one that says it, but the data, the collection of the data is great and strong. When you're talking with kids, sometimes they change their mind in formal settings and informal settings. And I'm going to tell you, the data that you've seen is frightening enough, the reality is it's stronger than that. I've spoken directly to high school students that when the Healthy Kids Survey came out and had a relatively lower number of percentage of kids who had or were currently vaping, my students looked at me unanimously, a bunch of them, and said, oh, no, 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 it's closer to 90, 95% of us that are actively using vapes and have them available. And that's not just my district, that's all six of us, we're all seeing it in our sites. A little scarier than that is, it's not just high school. We're seeing it in our middle schools, we're seeing it in our elementary schools. I've seen, personally have seen it down to first graders with vaping. It's a crisis, we're talking about tiny kiddos here, that with this amount of use in 10 years, it's going to be frightening, the medical situations that we're going to have on hand. So I'm here today to, again, speak for all of the districts in the county and truly encourage you to move forward with this. We know it isn't the solution, but we strongly believe that it is the first right start to help us get some momentum behind this crisis and protect our kids. So again, thank you for your time, and I, for all of us who our life is supporting our students every day, both instructionally and in their well-being, we really encourage you to move forward with this, and we thank you so much for your paying attention to this and looking into it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Brock Falkenberg, Lake County Superintendent of Schools. I asked Becky to present first, because she can bring the emotion and the reality that is being experienced on our school sites across this county, as she works a little closer to that school site than I do. But I want to say, I am not authorized to speak for all of the district superintendents across this county, but this is a subject that we speak about regularly. Our school sites are experiencing dilemmas, problems, struggles, as a result of the growing influence of vaping products and tobacco products on our school campuses. So I encourage you to move forward with a ordinance. If we need to take the time to really clearly identify, out of respect for Supervisor Green's concerns, a meaningful, workable, long-term solution in an ordinance, I would support that. However, we need to move this forward as rapidly as possible, and as the County Superintendent of Schools, I support your efforts moving forward in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Brock.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Perazzo, I work here in Lake County for the NorCal for Health Project, and I'm here today to speak about the tobacco retail license. The North Coast region is a tobacco prevention leader in California, and your neighboring counties of Delnor, Humboldt, and Mendocino all have tobacco retail licenses in their unincorporated areas, as well as some of their incorporated jurisdictions. Lake County can easily join this group and really set a precedent for the North Coast to have a comprehensive TRL that helps protect its communities. Tobacco retail policy is considered also best practice in public health circles and by the Centers for Disease Control. Important things to remember about the tobacco retail license, as far as retailers are concerned, that no tobacco retailers have gone out of business in Delnor or Humboldt counties because of the implementation of the tobacco retail license. Also, rural convenience stores can increase profit margins and revenue that helps protect its communities. Tobacco retail policy is considered also best practice in public health circles and by the Centers for Disease Control. Important things to remember about the tobacco retail license, as far as retailers are concerned, that no tobacco retailers have gone out of business in Delnor or Humboldt counties because of the implementation of the tobacco retail license. Also, rural convenience stores can increase profit margins and revenue without tobacco, without cigarettes, without flavored tobacco. Communities all around us are adopting tobacco retail licensing laws as one way to combat the public health problems associated with tobacco use, reduce tobacco-related health disparities, and ensure compliance with tobacco laws. The TRL is a revenue-neutral way to establish, I'm sorry, way that local jurisdictions establish a structure to enforce federal, state, and local laws. We can have a say in what's happening in our communities, and a TRL will help protect our kids and our businesses without waiting for the state to come in and do something about it. So let's continue to find success in this region with a local tobacco retail license policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ooh, good morning. Good morning, Chairman Crandall today.
Vice Chair, but just filling in.
Yeah, Vice Chair Crandall and fellow supervisors. For the record, my name is Joanne Cicado. I use the pronouns she/her, and I live on Cobb. In 2023, when I first came before this board on this topic, I was working for the NorCal for Health Project. I hadn't smoked for 20-plus years after a 25-year habit that began at age 13. I found Lake County's adult and youth tobacco and nicotine use rates alarming and was equally astonished at how tobacco and nicotine companies were allowed to and were actively working to addict our children to some of the deadliest retail products in American history. We know the vast majority, as was already spoken here, nearly 90% of our users begin before the age of 18, just like I did. Today, I come to you, of course, with that same personal history, but in a new position as the project coordinator for the California Health Collaboratives Rise Project. We're a statewide rural coordinating center that supports projects like NorCal for Health and the county's tobacco prevention program, but we do so all throughout rural California. This broader view has helped me understand that Lake County's high use rates and subsequently poor health outcomes that are associated with those rates are not about Lake County. We haven't done anything wrong, per se, but rather, it's about a concerted effort by tobacco and nicotine companies that target all rural communities. Through decades of aggressive and targeted marketing, advertising, and manipulative tactics, the industry remains a threat to our rural California communities and values. In fact, we should be furious that they have hijacked our rural way of life and our values and used those through their marketing strategies to addict us and our kids. So it's our policies or our lack of policies that have let these strategies persist. By adopting a youth-focused tobacco retail license ordinance, like the one before you today, you'd not only begin to protect Lake County's young people, you may actually be helping young people throughout rural California by strengthening a model. Both of these things are legacy that we can be proud of. And while it's helpful for surrounding jurisdictions to be in parity so that we lift everyone up equally, you shouldn't let that deter you from considering stronger protections in future iterations of this ordinance. There are other valuable options that communities do include in their prevention toolkits that further protect youth, such as minimum pack size and pricing and retail sales distancing from schools and other youth-friendly areas. This is a matter of dignity and respect for Lake County children and families. To close, I want to thank the board for taking this issue seriously and working diligently with the cities to boldly lead us away from F's towards A's in tobacco and nicotine use prevention. It's a great start, and our children and families deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? All right.
Hi, sorry about that. Greg Dameron, Blizzones Project. I'm going to share five personal experiences in three minutes or, yeah, whatever I have. Number one, I lost both of my grandparents, who were World War II vets, one fighting for the UK and one for the US due to premature deaths to smoking. My father's father fought in the Pacific in the Navy, and he died at 63. Basically, emphysema ate away the lining of his throat, and that didn't kill him. He died from hiccupping for six months straight, nonstop, and then heart failure. And he smoked to his dying day because he was addicted to nicotine from a young age. The second experience, my son, who just turned 21 a couple of months ago, did undercover youth purchase surveys for about two years. In County of Sonoma, all jurisdictions, City of Willets, and unincorporated Humboldt County and Arcadia and McKinneyville, he was sold to 105 times. That was showing his true California ID. And in many cases, he was patted on the back, people joked, they laughed, and they handed him the tobacco products. In some cases, he bought over $100 worth of vapes. And it was just, you know, my son is not a very good actor, but I guess his insecurity doing that and making that ask was convincing. So that's the second experience. The third one was County of Sonoma was mentioned. I was the code enforcement designee for County of Sonoma after they passed their tobacco retail license ordinance in unincorporated. And then in Windsor, I ran the enforcement of that, and I can attest to lower sales rates and compliance when there were tobacco retail license ordinances compared to not. It was marketed. It was amazing. And honestly, I became very popular with retailers. They welcomed me in. They asked me to come back behind the counters. Distributors really manage a lot of the inventory. It's kind of a plug-and-play. They oftentimes shop owners just sit there, and distributors handle all of that. By having a county designee, an expert, they can ask questions. Many of them want to comply. I'm not saying all are good actors, but a TRL is a tool to provide key services that the state isn't and the federal government isn't, and it's a confusing arena. So that's why we need local support. Where are we, number five? So I think we're on five. Fine, if we're not, eight seconds.
I've lost count, too.
I've talked to dozens of youth here, and what Becky has shared, what Liberty has shared, same story. And we've done, been part of hundreds of community presentations, not hundreds, but hundreds of people have been engaged. Their support, please pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment in the room? If not on Zoom, not on Zoom, bringing it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier or Chair Sabatier? Just real quick, I didn't say this at the beginning, and I should have. Taking over today because Supervisor Sabatier, as you could tell, has a hard time with his voice. He's coughing. And so he was had a coughing attack, and now his voice is not as well as it normally is. So I filled in for him.
And that's good for everybody. I just want to ask county council, do we need to have an implementation date in the TRL ordinance of January 1st, 2025? I didn't see that in there.
That's helpful for like, it's in section three.
Is it in there?
It is.
Okay. I appreciate that. I didn't, and I apologize for missing that. I know that Ms. Cicado mentioned future potential. I, two things. One, I would love to get an annual review whenever it's appropriate for you to do an annual review. Maybe it's during budget, when you're talking to us. Maybe it's during our workshop, when you're talking to us. But just to see what the impacts of the ordinance are, it would be good to continue to check in. And then a future amendment is one that I think is a missing component, but I don't want to stall what we have today. Online sales are part of our problem, and there are tools out there to negate online sales of tobacco products, which would benefit our local economy and our local retailers by forcing people through there. And we have control over the selling of those products to the youth through our TRL. So that's something that I hope we can bring back in the future to ensure continuity of working towards reducing youth access to tobacco products. And I'm ready to pass this as soon as possible.
Liberty?
In section two, it states online, or sorry, onsite sales.
Yeah.
It does say that it needs to be done in person. So that does prevent a tobacco retailer to allowing somebody to come into their establishment and order it online. It has to be purchased onsite.
But it will never, it will never stop UPS from delivering something to your property.
Right, right.
And that's what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
So a future amendment at one point is what I would like to see.
And part of my plan, when this gets implemented, is to have this a part of our annual report, which will be a large document, which, when that is finished in June or July, upcoming years, will include the TRL data. So I'd like to have that. And we are in the process of starting to collect more data on a lot of our programs.
Oh, and I'm sorry. Lastly, I just want to thank the staff that have been working on this. It's not just staff. It's so many different agencies. Thank you for your patience. This has been a conversation since 2020. And I don't mean to be rude to us as a board, but I feel that since 2018, we know 100% of those that were, that a decoy operation failed. I feel that the lack of action from this board has been a failure to our youth to take care of this problem. And today's a great day that we're making that change finally. And so thank you for your patience. Thank you for continuing to work with us. And I'm looking forward to the changes that we're going to make with this.
Supervisor Paeska?
I'm also really grateful that we have this in front of us today, and I know it was a long haul. And again, thank you for keeping this going, Liberty, and for all of you community partners for also doing this heavy lift. I have a high schooler and I have someone going into middle school. And the conversations over the last weekend in my house about prepping for school, I'll just share. My high schooler was telling my younger son, hey, don't go in the bathrooms ever at school, ever. Just hold it all day because there's always vaping in the bathrooms, and you just don't want to be a part of it because we're having conversations about, you know, being around people that are making choices that you don't want to make, and how do you keep yourself safe, and how do you avoid being guilty by association, and how do you avoid being complicit, and what does complicit mean? And those are the conversations we're having in our house. And so to hear her tell him, just hold it all day. That's the answer. So that's why I'm ready to move on this, and I can't wait for this to be part of our code. It's long overdue, but it is necessary.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Both my parents died of tobacco-related causes, too. That doesn't mean I'm going to agree with all this. I'm just letting you know, when I hear about one-year-old kids getting vapes, I don't think they went to the liquor store to buy it. Parents have a responsibility in this. I want to go back to the structure of this. It's not clear that it applies to the unincorporated county only. I don't know. I'm not aware that we have any ability to apply it countywide under the statute that gives us the authority. That statute authorizes this jurisdiction to pass this. It doesn't necessarily automatically dovetail with city ordinances. Accordingly, the potential future relationship for enforcement in the cities is not expressly authorized in this ordinance. I suppose it can be done by MOU, but the ordinance itself is silent on it. And like any ordinance, as good as the enforcement. So I want to look at the clause that says each tobacco retailer is going to get inspected at least one time every 12 months. And I have to go to our cannabis permit program. They have, what, 120 permits, and they struggle getting out every year to that. So how many tobacco retailers are in the unincorporated county? And if the vision is to also bring on the cities for enforcement, how many tobacco retailers are you proposing to inspect every 12 months under this ordinance?
So this current ordinance is just for the unincorporated areas because we cannot, we don't have jurisdiction. This board doesn't have jurisdiction to pass those policies in Clear Lake and Lakeport, so their boards need to pass those policies on their own. And we were looking at an MOU type of project to give the authority for those two jurisdictions for our environmental health to issue the license and do the enforcement. The DOJ grant is a little bit separate. That is separate from this policy here as far as the enforcement decoy operations that will be funneled through the Department of Justice grant initially. As far as the number of tobacco retailers, I know that currently those that are registered with the state of California, I know that there are tobacco retailers that are not registered with a tobacco program through the California state system. We have about 75 currently throughout the entire county. I can get back to you with the exact number of unincorporated retailers, but I don't have that currently with me today.
Let's just say I was like.
For unincorporated only? Oh, perfect.
So if you can come up to the mic real fast, I'll go ahead and leave it. It's still open, right? Did I, I'll open it back up just in case I didn't. So we'll go from there. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is just from the same source that Liberty cited before, the CTAT, which is by Stanford, and there's 47 in unincorporated, at least that are have the licenses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Forty-seven in unincorporated?
Unincorporated.
Okay.
And that was Joanne Cicado?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
And then finally, so question for county council. I don't see the unincorporated word clearly expressed in either the title or the requirements of section two. Does it require a formal statement as such to ensure that people subject this ordinance know it just applies to the unincorporated county?
No, no, it wouldn't be necessary because by default, when County of Lake, your board passes or adopts an ordinance, it is understood that it would only apply to the jurisdictional areas that your board, County of Lake, has control over. So that would automatically exclude, at this point initially, the cities which would have their own governing jurisdictions, governing bodies.
And the last question, you mentioned there may be some housekeeping on the chapter article references. I'm sure the board would be interested in that prior to making a motion.
Yes. So if your board may willing to consider the housekeeping minor revisions, I could certainly walk through those for your board's consideration so that, these are minor revisions, but the revisions nonetheless, so that if your board proceeds with adopting the, with the first reading, approving the first reading of this ordinance, it would be as amended. If your board wishes, I could walk through those.
Looks like we have a consensus for that.
My apologies. Lloyd did send me those corrections, and apparently I missed one. So I apologize for that.
And this is just for, you know, purposes of transparency. I believe much of the revisions, these minor revisions have been uploaded in the document that is labeled.
725.
Yeah, uploaded August 8/5 underscore TRL legal ledger 7 dot 25 dot 24. But again, just for purposes of transparency, I could walk through all of the revisions from the last posting under the Brown Act requirements of that time period of posting. I can believe it was last week or late last week, and walked through all those revisions, much of which is already reflected in what was uploaded in August 5. So to start, the, I think, because I would be referring to page numbers, so that would be the first minor revisions, set of revisions would be to label each sheet of the legal ledger of this document, ordinance document, with a page number. So it would be pages 1 through 15, which would correspond to each sequential sheet of this document. So with that being said, on page one, under the all caps bold heading of section one, findings, findings should be corrected to be spelled at F I N, in all caps, F I N D I N G S. Moving on to page two, the, I believe it's there on the later version, but just to again clarify, on page two, above the title heading of Article 13 of Chapter nine of the county code is hereby added as follows. That's around line 16 of that page. There should be a section, Roman numeral two, above it. And from that, from this point on, I would proceed with each page number. Well, I'll just do it. So on that same page, around line 17 and 18, where it says section one definitions, that should be changed to section nine dash 116 definitions. And that is done. And I'll be doing that in the course of the rest of these pages because that would be the right codification number if, once this is placed in the be the right codification number if, once this is placed, uh, in the Lake County Code. Um, so the last, uh, the last code section of Chapter nine of the Lake County Code was section nine dash one-one-five. So following through with that would, would be reflected here as starting in section nine dash one-one-six. And on that same line number on page two, um, the word, uh, references to chapter should be changed to article. Um, further down on that same page, around lines 23 to 25, the words title, section, uh, should be capitalized at the first letter. Again, just a minor correction there. Uh, moving on to page three, round line four through six, reference to chapter should be changed, revised to article. Moving forward, further down around lines 13 through 15, same type of revision. The reference to chapter should be changed to article.
Zoom is having a rave party.
Yes. We'll go ahead and take a break. We're having, uh, an issue with our Zoom and our, uh, cameras right now, or whatever you want to call it. So we'll take a five-minute break.
Hackers.
Okay.
At least they're not screaming at us.
Spirit of my grandfather.
And my father.
Little numbering things capitalized. Yeah. Certainly. If we're at second reading, yeah.
Who would know?
You just go back. Astrid.
I used to buy the extended version too.
You can take it anywhere.
Yeah, it was like a giant asteroid.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Welcome back, Lloyd. I appreciate you.
Places that sell cigarettes.
You're good?
Yeah.
I'm waiting for them all to come up.
Tower, red and white Chevron, General. All the, all the stores in my district that sell cigarettes.
Yeah. But a lot of them have like franchise laws and rules that are above the state level that they're already required to meet. Like some of them, it's an automatic ID, no matter how old you are.
Supervisor Green, I think we're ready to go. Uh, he found the glitch. Yeah. All right. It looks like we have corrected the issue. And we'll go ahead and continue where we left off with County Council Lloyd Guintavano.
Yes, continuing with the suggested revisions, uh, moving on to page five.
Yes, I think we should, we need Johanna, so we'll, we'll, we'll hold for a second.
Oops.
All right. I think she was, yes. So, um, I apologize for going too soon there. I was...
I'm glad you caught it. I wasn't even thinking about it.
Yeah, we would have had to start.
I'm an important person to have.
Yeah. Yay. No need. Thank you. We're already started. Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, all right, we're going to go ahead and continue forward.
So continuing on to, uh, page five, uh, in this set of revisions, uh, around line, around lines 20, 19 through 20, the reference to section two, uh, general requirements and prohibitions, uh, the reference to section two should be changed to section nine dash one-one-seven. Um, further down around on lines 24 through 25, the reference to chapter should be changed to article. And moving on to page six, uh, at the top, lines one through four, all references to chapter should be changed to, uh, the word article. And further down on lines 16 through 18, the reference to chapter should also be changed to article. On that same page, lines 20 through 21, the reference to section three should be changed to section nine dash one-one-eight. Moving on to page seven, at the top, uh, lines one through two, the reference to section four should stay, should be revised to state section nine dash one-one-nine. And further down around lines 10 through 11, the reference to section five should be changed to section nine dash one-two-zero. Around lines, uh, line 16, the reference to section six should be changed to section nine dash one-two-one. And on that same page, around lines, uh, 20 through 22, all references to the word chapter should be changed to article. Moving on to page eight, around lines one through 10, all references within that portion, uh, all references to chapter should be changed to article. Uh, around lines 12 through 13, the section seven reference should be changed to section nine dash one-two-two. And on lines 13 through 15, the reference to chapter should be changed to article. Around lines 18 through 19, again, the word chapter should be changed to, uh, article, as well as lines 21 through 22, the word chapter should be changed to article. Now on lines 23 through 24, uh, just for further clarification, uh, the, the phrase that is prohibited pursuant to this chapter, that is unlawful pursuant to any other chapter, should be read to state that is prohibited pursuant to this article, that is unlawful pursuant to any other chapter. So just to make that clear, uh, one word is changed, the other reference is retained. Moving on to page nine, at the top, lines one through three, uh, it should read, uh, and I'll just read it in whole, any other reason the granting of a license to the applicant that is not consistent with the requirements of this article, including the applicant's history of noncompliance with this article and other laws relating to the sale of tobacco products. That's how it should be read. And just one, about one line down, around line four, the reference to section eight should be changed to section nine dash one-two-three. And further down around lines nine through 10, the reference to section nine should be revised to state section nine dash one-two-four. Around lines 13 through 15, the reference to the word chapter should be changed to article. Around lines 20, section, the, the reference to section 10 should be changed to section nine dash one-two-five. And around lines 22 to 23, the reference to chapter should be changed to article. Moving on to page 10, at the top, lines one through two, the reference to section 11 should be revised to state section nine dash one-two-six. And from lines two through, two through eight, uh, all references to the word chapter should be changed to article. And around lines eight through nine, uh, the reference to section 12 should be revised to state section nine through, uh, nine dash one-two-seven. And then from lines 10 through 19, all references to the, to the word chapter should be changed to article. Moving on to page 11, at the top, uh, lines one through two, reference to section 12 should be revised to state section nine dash one-two-eight. Around lines five through six, the reference to the word chapter should be changed to article. Around line six through 18, there is a reference to, uh, the phrase provisions of subsections B one dash B five. That should be changed to, uh, the provisions of subsections B one through B four below. And then, uh, around lines 19, the, not, the reference to the word chapter should be changed to article. And then towards the bottom around lines 26 through 27, uh, the word thereon should be spelled T H E R E O N. Moving on to page 12, around line five, the reference to section 14 should be changed to section nine dash one-two-nine. And around lines 13 through 14, the reference to section 15 should be revised to state section nine dash one-thirty. Moving on to page 13, uh, around lines four to five, the reference to section nine, uh, section 16 should be read to state section nine dash one-three, one-three-one. So section nine dash one-three-one. And from lines five through 20, all references to the word chapter should be revised to state article. And then lines 20 to 21, the reference to section 17 should be revised to state section nine through, uh, nine dash one-thirty-two. And from lines 21 to 24, uh, all references to chapter, the word chapter should be changed to the word article. And this would be the last page, uh, for the revisions, for purposes of the revisions. Page 14, the, at the top, lines one to two, the reference to section 18 should be changed to section nine dash one-thirty-three. And on lines, uh, two through seven, all references to the word chapter should be revised to, uh, state the word article. And that is all, uh, as far as the suggested revisions for your board's consideration. And again, uh, if your board proceeds, this proceeds with the, uh, the approval of the first reading of this, of this ordinance, it would be as amended.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you so much. There's one on, um, on, that didn't help. Um, page seven, it was originally called section six B. Did we change section 13C in that statement to the new number?
Meaning section C of this article?
Section 13C of this article. Did we rename that to the new number?
That's right. Uh, so it should, and, and that, thank you for that clarification because, uh, on page seven, uh, lines 20 through 22, uh, the reference to section 13C should state section nine dash one-two-eight C. That will be the additional revision. Correct.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Similarly, on page nine, under the new section nine dash one-two-three, the last sentence refers to section six. So I believe that would be, uh, amended to section nine dash one-two-one.
Correct. Thank you for that.
All right. One second. Did you want to, I'll open it back up. Director Turner, please come up.
Thank you. We have not had, uh, Community, uh, Maria Turner, Community Development Director. We've had most of our discussions about the previous ordinance that was continued. Um, but, uh, on this one, under definitions, I don't know the page number because it doesn't come up when we access it from the internet. Um, but under section one and definitions, under G, department, means Lake County Department of Health Services and any agency or person designated by the department to enforce or administer the provisions of this chapter. We've had, I had some conversations with Liberty during the break who assured me that this would not then, um, be referred to code enforcement staff currently. However, you know, given that I really hope that this program will work in the future and not have to change for a long time, we, I would feel a lot more comfortable if the department definition could stop at means Lake County Department of Health Services rather than any agency that that department designates. Because historically, um, frequently on, uh, health and sanitation matters, we get complaints deferred or sent to us from Health Services Department for our enforcement. Uh, so we'd just like a little additional clarity in that, that would be permanent, uh, within the definition.
So the intent of that definition is to allow us to work with our local law enforcement agencies, not with community development?
So can I, can I respond to that?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Um, it doesn't say department. It says agency. And so we're not looking for another department to take this on.
Just as the sheriff's office counts as an agency, we also count as an agency.
But the fact that it could be, uh, the city of Lakeport, it could be the city of Clear Lake. Those are the agencies that this is looking to, uh, work with as well as the sheriff's department. And so it kind of covers it all. But if it said department, I would be concerned just in the same way that you are. Uh, but it does not because that is not the intent at all from, from what we have in front of us.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
County Council, one more section on page 11 at line five. Sections two through five should be amended to nine dash one-one-seven through nine dash one-two-zero, if I'm doing that right.
Just short clarification. I'm still trying to look for, oh, under page 11, the reference to section 13A was initially section?
At line five, the reference to sections two through five.
Right.
And, uh, and then I just found another one on page 12. And the one on, uh, page 12 would be at line three, that reference to section seven would be amended to nine dash one-two-two.
Yes, that would be fine. And also like to add, because I just spotted it, um, back to page 11, uh, the reference to section 13A should state section nine dash one-two-eight A.
All right. There's any other references? If not, uh, looking for action.
County Council, can you help me with the, uh, motion, please?
It'll be two motions. So the first motion would be to approve the first reading of the ordinance as amended, to be read in title only.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries? And, uh, yep, she's going to go ahead and read it.
It's an ordinance of Lake County regulating tobacco product sales, requiring the licensure of tobacco retailers and amending the Lake County Code.
All right. Go ahead.
The second motion would be to approve... The second motion would be to approve the draft ordinance as amended, as amended, be advanced to the next, uh, Board of Supervisors meeting for, uh, consideration and possible adoption.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, Dan, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much, Dan.